All right, good morning. This is Saturday, March 21st. This is the Ryanbeck Central School District Budget Workshop. Thank you all for coming this morning. With that, I'm going to introduce our Superintendent of Schools, who will make some introductions and continue on with the budget process.
Thanks, Mark. Well, first off, I'd like to start by thanking all of our board members for being here on the beautiful first day of spring. And also, especially to thank our district's administrators for being here. Hopefully, you will see fit to carve time out of our time this morning to take advantage of their experience and expertise in asking questions. I'll say right off the bat, we may not have the answers to all of your questions on anything we're unable to answer definitively here this morning. We'll have an opportunity to get you that information by the time we meet again on Tuesday evening, but do take advantage of their being here. And I appreciate their making the special effort to be here this morning. Mr. King is on his way. He had a little minor family situation at home, but he is en route. So probably by the time we get to the Q and A for the program, he'll be here, anticipating that. So as we start off, just wanted to take a few moments to go over the workshop process and ground rules. Just so everybody understands, this is a workshop meeting. This is the board's opportunity to meet, to focus on a single topic. It's really up to the board as to whether during the course of the workshop, you want to entertain comments or questions from people in the audience, from the public. That's not a requirement of this kind of meeting. This is basically a roll-up-your-sleeves, let's spend, you know, a two- or three-hour block of time just really digging into where we're at with the budget process. So this one's your meeting, but you can let anybody else play in the sandbox if you wish. But that's the board's prerogative to do that for this kind of a format. And basically, what we'll do is review, in a public meeting, kind of where the budget process has started and where we're at as we sit here on Saturday morning, March 21st. We'll go over the tax levy cap limit. There have been some slight tweaks to that, but we want to bring you up to speed as to exactly where that is today. We'll kind of go over where we're at today with a specific emphasis on the fourth draft of the budget. We're at a fourth draft stage today. Tom will be a part of all of these things, but in particular, Tom will go over our revenue projections at this point, which is probably the area that is least certain right now and which, in light of the tax levy cap limit, will drive some of the decisions that we'll make in terms of the spending side of the budget. And then leave time for the board to discuss, ask questions, whatever. I would anticipate that if we run true-to-form, depending on the number and complexity of the questions and the discussion, we typically are done by noon, sometimes earlier. Hopefully, not later. I mean, it's occasionally gone past noon. But just to give everybody an idea of what our parameters are in terms of time, we should be finishing up by midday, if not sooner. So that's kind of the overview of the whole process. And I guess I would draw your attention to, yeah, the document that says at the top, 2015-16 Budget Development Process. And Tom will give us a very quick review of where we started, including the rollover budget and what has happened with subsequent drafts, without going through each one unless there's a reason you want that. Because we've gone through all of these pieces of the budget development process in open session at board meetings. So the only thing that's new to you is where we're at with the fourth draft. Okay?
We'll get to more details.
Kind of a quick pass through the process just so everybody knows kind of what the ups and downs have been so far. So Tom, I'll send that your way.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everybody. I want to take you back one year, just to give you a little history. Our current budget, which we're working on in the 14-15 school year, is $30 million, $30.85 million. It was a 1.87% increase last year, okay? And the tax levy is $25.97 million, just short of $26 million. Also, that was a 1.87% increase over the prior year. That was kind of lockstep and barrel with each other. It's an unusual thing that happens, but I'm glad it did. And we had a 79% voter approval rating, just giving you a little history. So in December, we rolled out a rollover budget, which really just takes whatever is in the budget currently and just rolls it forward a year with, you know, with some guesstimates as to increases. At that time, it's, you know, just what's in the budget. And so when we did a rollover budget, it was 3.34%, just rolling it over, everything as is. Then we did a first draft budget in the beginning of January, in which what we do through the process, and as we begin the process, we ask the principals and department heads, you know, what they require further the next year. So that all goes into putting in the first draft. But also, there's a lot more adjustments to that, taking a look at our special ed population, our tuition, transportation, just looking at everything, our debt service. And really, this is really, really where it comes in. The rollover budget is everything going forward, but... So the first iteration in early January was a 4.84% budget-to-budget increase. And if I remember correctly, it drove a tax levy over 5%. I don't know the exact number, but it was quite a bit higher. Then subsequently, at the February 10th meeting, we came and we made revisions to that first draft. And as you recall, this first revision took into account the teacher retirements. That has been very helpful, to tell you the truth, moving that date forward and getting notice very early in the process. And through that process, we were able to eliminate about $250,000 worth of expenditures. That still drove a tax levy of 4.9%, which was way above what, at that time, what I had calculated as the tax levy limit is 2.18%. So we had an amount of $700,000, over $700,000 to get down to that tax levy limit. Subsequently, at our next meeting, we were able to get a little bit more out of it, two weeks later, a little over $110,000. And that was mainly due to health insurance and some leave of absences that the board granted to a teacher. So what that did was able to bring it down about $110,000, still looking, budget-to-budget, 3.7%, but still driving a tax levy almost at 4.5%. But we were able to get the amount, the delta, down to about $600,000. So that's where we stood at the last board meeting. We were at a $600,000 delta.
Tom, I see that the difference between what you calculated as the maximum allowable tax levy limit changed from the prior meeting to that meeting. Can you just explain that briefly?
Yeah, well, there's a little bit tweaks that have been going on. And basically, the first one, reiteration, was a best guess based on what we'd received. And then subsequently to that, then, we got our state aid run, which really identified what are called capital exclusions, what we're allowed to, really taking your debt service, how much building aid we're getting, and that difference is a big factor in calculating the tax levy limit.
We got a state aid run?
Just a rollover.
Okay.
So...
That's what I was supposed to say.
And the big thing about it is building aid doesn't change typically. But there is one little caveat there, is they did make a change in the building aid, where we know exactly what we're supposed to get in building aid based on previous years' assumed interest rates. And the state, of course, did a little jog to save themselves some money. And subsequently, took about $5,000 out of our state aid. But, so, I made an adjustment for that. So that's really where the adjustments have been. It was like, does it include it? Took it out, put it back in. And I'm going in saying that we're not going to get the waiver. And if we do get the waiver, great, it's only $5,000.
What waiver were you talking about?
Well, we put in a waiver to use our interest rates when we borrowed at that time versus what the state has done as... After 10 years, when you do a bond, they look at the interest rate 10 years later and say, "Oh, well, you can refinance now, and you can get it now at 2.5%. Therefore, you know, we were paying you on 3.5%, but you can refinance now at 2.5%, so we're only going to pay you for 2.5." And, you know, a couple of years ago, we did go out and refinance that. So, and that still really hasn't caught up yet. They get a little bit behind in that, so it's just what it is. So that's really the little tweaks to it. And we'll go through the whole tax levy limit calculation as we go on.
Yeah, again, just to clarify, the state aid run that Tom was talking about is not the traditional state aid runs based on the executive budget that school districts have gotten within hours of the executive budget because of all the caveats that the governor has put on state aid as well as his directive to the Division of the Budget not to release anything. So, and here we sit today in the same spot.
Okay, thank you.
So at the end of last time, we had the delta of just under $600,000. And subsequently, we now get into some changes that occurred over the past couple of weeks due to things becoming a little bit firmer and some additional requests. And, you know, things come up as we go through here. And I will go through this, and if you start looking at the bottom here of page two, typically do this on a board night, but let me get you up to date as to why these particular items have changed. In BOSI Services 162490, you see a proposed increase of $19,000. And in reality, what that is, is our internet access has increased tremendously. And the reason is, we're going from a 10-gigabyte ring to a 10-gigabyte ring. So there was a lot of equipment that the BOSIs needs to acquire to go to this for next year, plus also having 10 gigabyte costing a little bit more. But what this does is it sets us up for the next decade as far as having bandwidth, not only for our school, but all school districts in Dutchess County. The next one you see is a teacher aid salary, additional $10,000. Within the past month, the high school has requested additional time. They, and you'll find it on the other side, the high school has gone through and called their budget to afford this. So it wasn't quite an addition. He went through his budget and repurposed some of his budget for that. 2250490 is our special ed BOSI Services. I put an extra placeholder in there to have two unanticipated openings. And we're pretty sure one's going to occur. So I always want to give myself one opening. As we know, that was a big issue this year. I only had three slots at the end of last year. We only had one student in the BOSI's special ed program. And earlier this year, at one point, I think we had eight or nine in the BOSI's program. So we're quite a few short. So the budget, the initial draft, it's in there. But subsequently, Richard has been having CSE meetings and CPSE meetings, and we've identified some potential ones there. I want to safeguard ourselves there. In the next section, Repair and Maintenance Computer, I see an additional $15,000. Explain this a little bit more because there's a decrease on the other side. In the current, in the budget, current budget we have now, we have in there a infrastructure manager, which was to run, to oversee with Michelle, the entire computer operations. Everything's in place now. We feel as though we want to change this a little bit. We're looking to hire a computer technician, which will be doing the work in the classroom, changing toner, fixing printers and computers and things of that nature at a good price. But adding $15,000 on this side to have a company make sure and oversee the entire operation, just in case we do have issues, we can have money there to be able to access, you know, a computer tech, a high-level computer tech as needed. And it may not have to happen at all.
Before you go on, can you just clarify something? Because I heard you say two different things. I heard you say, "hire a computer tech, but also have a company oversee." So is this a situation where we'd be contracting with a company to provide us with computer tech services? Or we actually be hiring somebody as a Ryanbeck employee?
We would...
For both?
Yes.
Yes.
Next question. No, let's just...
That was a little too clarified.
I just want to clarify something Tom said. He used the word "oversee the operation." That's not what that would be for. The person who oversees the operation is Steve Jensen. So I just want to be clear about that. We had last year anticipated hiring a very high-level tech to be responsible for the network, especially with all the additional hardware, wireless system, et cetera, et cetera. And we, quite frankly, were not able to find a suitable person to hire at that skill level. There are various skill levels for computer technicians, as I understand it. So as we've worked through this year, we've rethought that and believe that we can make do with a... I know this sounds, this doesn't sound great when I say it, but I can't think of, I can't be more articulate this early in the morning. A technician at a lower skill level than a network manager, at a lower cost, too. And, but to keep, so there'll be a savings there, but to keep $15,000 for consultant services in case we have to bring somebody in to deal with some higher-level issue that's not an everyday network issue.
Now I'm with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Tom, back to you.
So the next one, BOSI Services, and this is also in the computer area. You see an additional $10,000. Currently, right now, Dutchess BOSIs and the Ulster, or I can't remember where it's, Orange BOSIs or Ulster BOSIs are going to go do an RFP for the denial of service.
Orange Ulster.
Orange Ulster. That, there's been an issue in the county of a couple of school districts being attacked.
Cyber attacked.
Cyber attacked. And what it does is it just brings the entire ring in all of Dutchess County to a screeching kind of halt. And so everything needs to be brought down. There's an interruption of service. 10 minutes later, everything comes back. But whatever school district is receiving that cyber attack is offline until that is solved. There is, they're looking at potential solutions. And this potential solution is up to about a $10,000 cost. So this is something new that has just come up in the past month or so. So I put that $10,000 as a placeholder, hoping that we find a cheaper solution. Because one of the solutions we, I think all districts felt wasn't it, is that the one service would only protect the first 10 or 12 attacks. And then after that, it costs like $5,000 for every attack. And it was like, and it was unlimited. And this could happen every day, for all we know. And we decided there had to be a better solution. And so they're going out to look for a better solution and bringing in other school districts for efficiency.
Given the atmosphere out there, that wasn't anticipated and encoded when we were setting this up in the first place? Didn't it even be attacked?
No, we...
This has nothing to do with our system.
It's not happening here. It's happening in another school district, but affects everybody because it's one giant LAN, or WAN, I guess it is. And so all the internet is going out of big circle around here. So if one school district gets attacked, and has been attacked, it's bogging the whole system down across the county.
Well, since we send that money, they didn't anticipate that this was something that was...
Well, this is something that's kind of new. I mean, it's...
No, they didn't anticipate it, but to be honest, it wasn't happening. Again, I guess they could have charged us $10,000 more a year for something that hasn't been happening. And we'd be sitting here saying, "What are we paying money for? It's not a problem." Well, now it's a problem, so they're looking for a solution. And we're pressing on them to look for the most reasonable, financially reasonable, rational solution to the problem. There's a lot of finger pointing, you know, Light Tower, the company that provides our service. The superintendents have been asking, "Well, why isn't it their responsibility?" If you, you know, if, I think they use the analogy of ordering milk for your cafeteria program. You know, if the milk's showing up at your cafeteria every day or occasionally, and it's sour, you go back to the company and say, "Hey, you're giving us a product that's not safe." But of course, this is pretty new stuff. So the company's saying, "Hey, not our responsibility, it's your responsibility." And in the meantime, it's taking down systems across the county. Again, we have been down, but the way it impacts us is for maybe five or 10 minutes. I mean, it's not grinding us to a halt. If we were to be getting attacked directly, it would. But even if it's not us that is receiving the attack, it's impacting all the school districts on this ring, so...
It's in the middle of a class, and all of a sudden it's down.
Yeah.
This is to avoid that from happening.
Yeah.
Do you know what the prevalence has been of these attacks thus far?
Steve, I think you could jump in any time.
Sure. A D E O S attack is an attack where it's a distributed denial of services. And basically, that's a person will program computers to attack a system. And what it will do is it'll overwhelm the system to such a point that the system shuts down. So that's basically what they do. People do it because they don't want... The last event that we had reported to us that somebody from one of the school districts, a student, didn't want to take a test.
Yeah, it was one of its students.
You know, so it could be that. So, and variety of reasons, you know, there are probably 100 different ones. The original scenario that we had, and what every district was experiencing this year and even last year, was when an attack occurred on any district, and there's 13 school districts within the county, the whole system, by design, shut down to protect everybody. So literally, BOSIs shut down the ring. The attack was not shutting down the ring. We did it as a way of protecting ourselves. So everybody then rode out that attack. It might be an hour, it might be two hours, three hours. It depended on, you know, the intensity. Obviously, there was a lot of consternation about that among tech directors. We, you know, didn't like it because we were obviously getting heat from our constituents back in our district about the network going down and those kinds of things and causing instability and the lack of credibility on your network. So the technical arm of the BOSIs changed a little bit. And what they did was, let's say, Ryanbeck got attacked. So instead of the whole system, the whole system would go down like it normally does, but they would reroute the traffic so that the other 12 districts could come up. And the one district that's being attacked stays down until that attack is done. And that was attempted, but it still takes us down for 10, 15 minutes, something like that. And that's free. That came at no charge. But we were all very satisfied with, as far as the tech director was concerned, because at least only one is being affected, not all 13 school districts. So the solution to have protection for everybody, because if you're the district that's constantly being attacked, you're going to want, you know, you don't want that situation. That's not going to be a viable situation for you. So the Dutchess County BOSIs went out with a, went out and required about a different solution for them, and required with several companies. The solution that came back was, everybody anties up, every district anties up about $5,000, and that had protection for the first 12 attacks. And then, after that, it's, you just pay per attack. And there was no way that many tech directors were going to their... There was no way I was going to go to the superintendent and say, "I need $5,000 upfront and a blank check thereafter." And that was not going to happen, so...
Because he likes working here.
Yes, that's correct, exactly. So we were not going, you know, that was not a viable option. So they quickly, the BOSIs, decided to then marry up with the Orange Ulster BOSIs and thought a larger consortium would have more weight, a little more pressure on the companies that would bid on something like this. And so they want to go out with an RFP that's a little more palatable for all districts concerned. So they're broadening the consortium, waiting for an RFP, and we're all just waiting for that process to work itself through.
Steve, is your illustration actually what was happening? There was one district amongst the 13 that was the constant target?
There were two districts in particular that it sometimes alternated. But it was always, we've never been attacked directly here, but there have been two districts that have had multiple attacks.
So why not just carve them out and give them their own...
Yeah, I mean, you know, the problem with that is if you do that kind of thing, then every, the cost for all the other districts goes up because you've got less people involved in your consortium. So it would be an increased cost even if we tried to do that.
And I would also say that the districts in our BOSIs, and I, you know, I won't take any credit for it personally, but the superintendents in our BOSIs, I think, work very well together and realize, "This is a common problem. And if it's not your district today, it could be your district next week." So let's, we're all in this together by light of the fact that we're all part of this ring. And that saves us money by being part of this consortium. So let's bite the bullet and do something that's going to protect everybody's interests ultimately. So, yeah, I mean, I'm more, you know, again, I'm not being very eloquent here, but, you know, a more selfish way would be to say, "Hey, you guys are on your own, forget it, carve them out. But when it's us next week, we're going to be pleading for help because it's us who's on the hot seat." So if everybody's taken a little bite of the apple and it protects all of us, then we're all winners at a modest cost. So I think that's the rationale. Across the county, the superintendents have been very supportive of that idea of, "Let's do something small to help everybody" as opposed to every man for himself and forget it because it could be us the next time.
I think that makes perfect sense. So I don't in any way question the solution in terms of efficiency and sharing the risk across these, you know, these different groups of schools. But I guess the only other question I have for you is, in investigating the causes for these attacks, are there legal sanctions for individuals, like who are minors who may be involved? I'm just thinking if someone repeatedly pulled a fire drill every day, and the police department had, you know, we had run out. I mean, it sort of seems similar in terms of just disrupting.
Yeah, I can certainly research that topic. I do know that they did find the identity of the last attack and who caused that attack. So I'll research and find out exactly what procedures and steps, because we may find ourselves in the very same boat.
Or financial liability of the parents of that...
The answer to your question is yes. There are criminal sanctions. But practically speaking, when you're talking about a student doing it, it's unlikely that a district is going to seek criminal prosecution unless you're talking about, you know, like, an 18-year-old who's been a repeat offender. You know, you don't want to be prosecuting 12-year-olds.
No.
Or at least not in Ryanbeck.
There are places apparently where they do prosecute.
Even if you cure that, it's not inconceivable to come from North Korea or something like that. that.
That's another thing. China, North Korea, Russia.
I'm just thinking about the kind of financial picture of how expensive, at what point does it become so expensive for districts that there's some responsibility to share?
And that was the concern with the, that $5,000 upfront unlimited afterwards. Because, I mean, I just quickly did the math, if there were 12 districts in the, in the Duchess County, and it's, everybody's answering up $5,000, you don't get, roughly, it's $5,000 a attack that everybody is sharing. So every attack thereafter, we're going to pay 1/12 roughly of that cost of $5,000 for every, and I wasn't, you know, there wasn't a tech director, I don't think, that would support that, that solution at all, so. So they're working on it, and we're looking at a wider consortium of people to share that.
Can you just throw an accolade here? Thank you, that was really clear. I'm already happier to be here than I was at 6:00.
Thanks, thanks. Okay, Tom, back to you, Tom.
All right, the next two are just the ERS and Social Security that are associated with the high school teacher aid, which is a three-hour position, just to let you know. So it doesn't come with benefits or anything like that. On the second page, or actually, it's the third page, here's some negatives.
No, these are actually positives. Because they're taking money away.
So, that's 100% correct there. But what we have here are the deletions. A lot of it was, I was able to get Ulster County BOSIs figures and was able to fine-tune it. And so a lot of these small BOSI services one are just a fine-tuning of those figures, so.
Did you say Ulster or Duchess?
Ulster, Ulster.
Oh, this is for the computers now?
Duchess I had, Ulster I did not.
Got it, got it.
And so I was able to get Ulsters, because they didn't publish them in their service guide. You actually had it where Duchess publishes them and we see them. So, so the first one is exactly that, just a bit of a fine-tuning for that. I can't, I wouldn't know exactly what it was, but I think that's in the printing services that I was able to cut back in. The next one, the $35,000, and that was changing it from an infrastructure manager to a technician. So there, we see the savings there. We got the final administrative charges from BOSIs, and I was able to reduce it by 3,000, or $8,000. It was only up about 2.5%, if I remember correctly. So that was a welcome sight. Once again, fine-tuning for the BOSI services for 2010, for 90. Then you see some offsets, you see some smaller offsets at the high school. This is how the high school repurposed their money to afford the teacher aid.
The part-time teacher aid.
Part-time teacher aid. So that's, that's like the next six or seven of them right there through the textbooks. In the 2110, 490, BOSI services, I actually took a placement out of there for a high school alternative education, but added back in a couple GED slots that were requested. So it was just a shuffling, which saved us some money of about $15,000. The next code we're saving is about $19,000 almost. I found a double booking for, this is really library databases, I already account for them in BOSIs, and the high school requested it just as software. It's a double book, let's take it out of there.
Which item is this?
That's the software supplies library.
Got it, got it, got it.
In the next section with the teacher salary coaches, I took out a field hockey position, since we've only been running two field hockey teams for the past three years. So, I mean, we anticipate that to occur, so we took one out. We also took out a, the cheerleading coach. We have not run, it's been in the budget, but it just never has gone off the ground. And also took out a novice coach. But in the meantime, I added in a track coach, because the track now is really three, it's really a three-person track, as opposed to boys and girls. It's broken down by discipline. Distance running, sprints, and then field events. So it's broken down that way, so I added it back in. But net result, I was able to decrease it by $5,000. 2855, I was able to reduce the athletics by $11,500 for officials, and was able to shore up due to the fact with the, with the football, because the football money was in the program the entire time. We are doing the Pine Plains next year, but even going back and looking at it, there's extra money there, and we took some of those monies out of there that would not be required. Looking at, the next one, optimizing transportation runs. This would be taking one bus route out of the system, would save us $45,000. So we're going through the position of optimizing, and it's really looking at some of the shorter runs, and then taking existing bus routes, and really looking at one or two bus runs that I've identified and saying, we could pick up these kids with the other buses coming in.
So it's consolidation?
Yep, consolidating that.
Can you be, Tom, and that parallels with the early start time business that's going on?
That wouldn't matter one way or the other. The early start time would not be affected by this, because as we looked at everything, this would still, would still work, no matter what we did. I think the one solution we are looking at, it's no additional cost, it's really a matter of really taking a look at the lengths of rides, and then having to look to, one of the things may have to happen, because one of my concerns is, is after we drop off high school students and middle school students in the morning, being able to turn around and get back out to Clinton to do that. And so we've come up with some ways in which that can happen, and, but anyway, it still happened with, with the reduction of the one bus route.
You checked that out.
The, the next one is the teacher retirement system. This was just sharpening my pen and going back and taking a look at it, and just knowing, just taking the budgets of all the people I know in the teacher retirement system, a little bit extra, that was just a fine-tuning of it, and was able to get approximately $30,000 out there. And the last one being health insurance. The final D-HIC rate was, came at 5.55%. Originally budgeted eight, then budgeted six, now we're at 5.55, and we're able to reduce it by approximately $31,000. So, and then that change to this was $132,000. So our current budget is $31.86 million. It drives a 3.27% budget-to-budget increase. But one of the things you see now is the tax levy is 3.32%. And we'll get, because that refers to the revenue side too, because there's a piece there on the revenue side I haven't talked about, but is in this particular number. Our tax levy limit is, it changed again, a little bit lower. We're at 2.16, and right now, we have a delta of just under $300,000. And we'll get into the reason, because there's a revenue piece that helps bring us from 600 to 300. And that's that excess cost aid, and we'll talk about that when we get to that part.
So, you know, maybe we ought to, just looking at the agenda, maybe we ought to switch it up a little bit, and maybe talking about the revenue, and then the tax levy cap limit would be a good segue into the kind of where do we go from here part of the discussion. So why don't we do that?
So let's go to the tax levy limit first, because this is our big driver. And not too much has changed, but we'll go through this whole process for people who haven't been here, because it is a formula that the state controllers put together that is step-by-step process. And what you do is you start with last year's tax levy, which was about $25.97 million. We add, or we multiply that by a tax-based growth factor. And what they do is they look at new buildings, and not, not increases based on the value going up just because of real estate. They're actually looking at new construction, whether that new construction is commercial, whether it's residential, doesn't matter. It could be a new house, it could be an addition to a house, it could be a deck. Those are all additions to your tax base. So in the, in the year, previous year, the tax base for the Rhinebeck Central School District was 0.61%, which is a very favorable number compared to most. I think overall, across the county, I think it was about 0.2, like 0.25 across the board. So Rhinebeck is seeing, you know, some building growth higher than most, most other school districts, so. And I think you see that as you go around, you see, you know, buildings popping up, you got the hospital, which part of that will be coming on at some point, I don't know when, but it will.
The Gardens.
What's that?
The Gardens.
Yep, the Gardens, yep.
Phase two during that.
So, you know, so it's, it's a nice positive to see is construction, because that does help our growth, to grow our tax base. What you do is you add in your pilots, this is money we get in lieu of taxes, that's just over at the Baptist home. We then subtract levies, taxes levied from exemptions during prior year, and this is the capital exclusion. So what we do is we take our debt service minus, and that's what we're going to pay out for our bonds that have been purchased over the years, and we subtract out the building aid associated with it. So you see the 1.148 million. And you'll see, it's the same number on the next page too, because it's, it's really interesting how those numbers really haven't changed too much. So we get just slightly under $25 million is the adjusted prior year tax levy, and then we multiply that by the levy growth. It's the lesser of 2% or the CPI. CPI this year was calculated at 1.62%. So less than the 2%. Last year was a little bit lower, I think it was about 1.5. So a little bit higher CPI. We then subtract out the pilots, we're giving a little bit more on the pilots, any carryover, and that's what happened, and that's, we had to take out the carryover. It was only about $2,000. You really can't have a carryover. It really is impossible to have one. So that comes with your tax levy limit, which we bring over onto the next page. And basically, we only make one change to that, and that's that capital exclusion. We look at the tax levy for this year, subtract out the building aid. I added back in the possible exclusion that we're going to get of about $5,000 based on the amortized interest rate. So we're looking at-
Wait, where did you add that back?
It's that 1.148 million dollars.
That's reflected in my number?
Yes, that's reflected in my number. And so we have a maximum allowable tax levy of $26,534,234, which is-
Is less than last year.
2.17%. So that's our maximum tax levy that we're able to do.
In order to stay within the tax cap?
With, to stay within the tax cap. So that gets us through the tax cap. Any questions about that? There's really not too much we can do about that.
I do, I do have one question. And I'm not looking to give you another job to do, I'm just wondering if you know what the difference in the figure would be based on a 2% rather than the CPI.
No, but I'll figure that out.
You don't have to, I was just wondering.
No.
Because there, the reason that I ask is that when we met with one of the legislators, I think it was Cahill? Yeah. There was some discussion about the possibility of going to a, you know, a flat 2% rather than having that either-or, at least pushing for that. And so I was wondering how that would affect us.
Well, I would, oh, let's see, if we go-
You don't have to do this here this morning.
No, just doing it in my head, I would say that, just, just ballparking it, it would decrease the tax levy by about $50,000.
Decreasing?
Yeah, if we had a, you mean-
It was a flat 2%.
Oh, you mean, actually, instead of the and/or, if, oh, 2%, that's a different number, I'd have to figure that one out. But that's a good question, that's a really good question. I like that. Because I, because a couple of years ago, it was zero.
Right.
It was zero. And the only reason why it got higher was because the TRS had gone up so much, and it actually helped us drive it that way. And we had a good year for the, the tax base too. And, but other school district had a real tough time of it, real tough time. Now, when we take a look at the revenues, not too much has changed, but you'll, I'm going, and this is this one here, this is where everybody, it's the fourth draft of the 2015-16 budget here. Not too much has changed here, just a kind of-
It says real property taxes and tax items in the upper left-hand corner there.
So, so what we have here, and-
So everybody had that on the board?
Yes, yeah.
So, and you'll see that the tax levy is showing a 3.32% budget-to-budget increase. Didn't make too many changes throughout this document, because really, our revenues don't change that much at all. You'll see that the pilots have increased by $852, but likewise, it reduces our tax levy by $852. It's a wash. The interest and penalties, keeping at 40,000, we collect right around 40, could be 38 one year, 42 another year, 40 is a good number for us. Tuition for non-residents, we anticipated, we had quite a few inquiries last year, they just didn't pan out. So we kind of overwin it, so I'm reducing the amount that we would potentially receive from non-resident tuition. Interest and earnings, as you know, that hasn't budged at all. If you look at your own bank statements, we're getting the same, same thing here too, very, very piddly in the amount of interest. Though that would be the one, if things got back to normal, this is where you'd see a good increase in being able to add into the budget, because this does not affect, affect your real property taxes, that would be a bonus. I mean, that, that's a good way. I would hope by now, our interest rates would be back to normal, but they're not, but that's, that's, guess what, we can't control that. So rentals, that's about the right thing. Insurance recoveries, this is through our workers' comp program to help offset. And the next one, the miscellaneous area, I didn't want to change anything here, where we have our BOSIs, refunded BOSIs-aided services. We pay an amount to BOSIs throughout the year, at the end of the year, they do a reconciliation. So they may come up and say a, and I'm just going to use a round figure here, our occupational ed program, a student who goes there is about $10,000. They may get through the end of the year, and they recalculate everything and say, okay, you know, it actually costs $9,500 per student, $500 savings per student, and you had 20 students, okay, here's $10,000 that comes back to you. So they go through a process at the end of the year. They don't have a fund balance. Their fund balance is then, they figure out what it is, and then they return those funds to us the next year. This year was a little bit higher, we received about $120,000, which was great, but then refunded prior year expenses is low for us this year. So it kind of balances each other out. And then we have some other miscellaneous type of things that come in. So if we go on to the next page, and this is where I have made a change. We have kept state aid flat. What we received last year is what we expect this year. We all know it's going to change to be something other than that, but what it ends up being, higher, lower, I don't know, I'm hoping it's going to be higher. But we'll, we'll have to see, within the next, maybe a couple of weeks, we might know, and maybe a little bit longer.
It's less, it's less than that for a on-time budget.
Yeah, so.
It's the same next Friday, aren't they?
So I'm keeping our fingers crossed, I'd rather get it two months later if it's, if it's more beneficial to us than to shove something through in a couple of weeks that isn't beneficial to us. So whatever takes, whatever gets us the most aid, that's what I'm really most concerned about. But you do see one change here, and I've added an additional $170,000 to the excess cost aid. I've gone through, based on sitting down with Richard and Lucette, we went through student by student to determine potentially what additional excess aid, because the, the aid runs we do get from, from New York State aren't tied to the stack system. The stack system is what we use, and we put in the information about every single special ed student, to all their costs associated with them. And so that isn't tied into the state aid system, so the number that's there isn't always correct. So whenever those state aid run comes out, you're probably going to see the same number in excess cost aid, but I can tell you what, due to our increase in our special ed population, we will get additional. And what will happen though, and here's the problem, as we go forward, let's say next year, we do recognize all those monies, and I, I know we will recognize them. There is going to become a year when our special education population goes down, and we won't receive that, but the state aid run will show it, that, oh, we anticipate you're going to get what you got last year.
They'll take it away.
I got to take it away. So I just want you to know in the future, you know, when you get a state aid run, I'm going to have to be really careful.
There's always a lag in those state aid runs, even in a great year.
Yeah.
So that's just the way it is.
Right. And what happens too, and they are matched to the year, so our, our special ed students that are here with us this year, okay, we won't know until August, maybe even further out, as exactly how much, but we will get state aid, it will be a receivable for us. So we would book it in the year in which it happened, we won't see that money till September or October. But that's okay, as long as I know what the- As long as I know what the number is, that's good. So that helps us on the budget side to match up expenses to the revenues.
So wait, the money that comes in in September or October, does that, where does that money go? Is it paying outstanding bills? Is it going into the general fund?
Just goes into the general fund.
Okay.
But it wouldn't come in as a revenue, because we had recognized the revenue the year before through a journal entry. So when this comes in, it's just, hey, we got a receivable here. So it's just a money thing. So, but as far as a cash flow issue, and that's what really, that would be, this really has no effect with our school district, because we are taxpayer-dependent, meaning we get a bulk of our money in September, in October, where other school districts that are dependent upon state aid, they have a tougher time, and sometimes they have to go out and borrow money to meet their obligations. The school district has never been in that case. Kind of, it's, it helps in one way. We don't have to go out and borrow and spend money to receive money, but also in the same fashion, we are taxpayer-dependent, you know, school district. And so, you know, the cash flow has never been an issue here. So I did add 170, that's a very conservative number, but I think it's definitely something we definitely will hit, no problem, and I feel comfortable with that.
And we might get more.
Might, we could potentially get more monies. And you really don't know until you get to the end of that year. So this number here won't be actually, we won't know until August of 2016, actually, what that is. So, but I'm very comfortable that we would be able to hit that $300,000 excess cost aid and not have to worry about that. So that's how we've got, so the first, where we went through the actual changes to the budget, netted us about $130,000 of savings. On the revenue side, we have $170,000 worth of, we call new revenues, or in the budget, that is about $300,000 net coming out of this. So we've had that delta go from $600,000 to now slightly under $300,000. Any questions?
Okay, so let me make a point while you're mulling questions, or not. And at the risk of being repetitive to those who've been on the board for more than a year or two, primarily for the benefit of anybody who might be watching this on YouTube, we're talking about the budget, we're actually talking about two factors, expenses and revenues. And we're, the tricky part about this is, within the revenue side of it, the more revenues that we get from sources other than the tax levy, the lower the tax levy can be for our taxpayers. So that's what we're looking to do, is maximize other revenues and depress as much as we can the impact on the taxpayer, because that is where we start looking at the tax levy limit. That's the amount of money we raise from property taxes, and that's the third factor over the past several years that we have to balance here. Our spending, or our anticipated spending, our revenues, or our anticipated revenues absent taxes, and then staying within that tax levy limit. That's been the board's directive to us, is to try to develop a budget that is acceptable educationally and that stays within that tax levy limit. Not being able to do that would mean we would be looking at the possibility of going out to our taxpayers to override the tax levy cap. Overrides to the tax levy cap have not been very successful in New York State since the advent of the tax levy limit. Even in affluent school districts, it not fared very well. I think it's, I think it's a wise decision, as long as we can continue to fund a viable instructional program within the tax levy limit, not to look to exceed that cap. There may come a day when we don't have a choice. I don't think that day is, in fact, I know that day is not today, or not this year. I don't think we're there this year, but I would not rule it out at some point down the road. A lot can happen. So that's the balancing act in this whole scenario. So, which brings me to kind of the next chunk of this, unless there are any questions on what Tom said, I don't want to mix these things up.
Well, so you're actually kind of playing to the audience out there, that's a very important point that you just said, isn't it? We can't rule this out down the road, because that's what the cap is doing, it is crushing us each year as things go up as they have to. But we can't ask for more money all the time.
Right. That's going to happen. That's correct, and that's actually a good lead-in to the next section. I want to say a couple of things before we start to talk about, okay, we have, as we sit here today, not having any increase in state aid. And that's a huge factor in this whole scenario, so I don't want to underplay the significance of that right now in our discussions. But with that as a given, we're looking at just less than a $300,000 gap between what our spending plan looks like today and the tax levy cap limit. That's what we're looking at right now. So how do we overcome a $300,000 gap, assuming we want to stay within the tax levy limit, which again is another one of the assumptions that I'm operating under? So there's a couple of things that that could happen, and possibly in combination with one another. Depending on what happens in Albany over the next week, or a couple of weeks, or a couple of months, now that couple of months is problematic. Couple of days or a couple of weeks isn't a problem, because we have until April 21st to adopt the budget. But let's say, purely speculative, purely speculative, let's say we find out at the end of next week, or the beginning of the following week, that the legislature and the governor agree to restore the gap elimination adjustment, which everybody knows what that is. That's the hit that every school district took on their state aid, because the state was in such dire fiscal straits back in 2008, and they needed to pull back some of that money to help the state balance their budget. And now in 2014-15, the state apparently has at least a $2 billion surplus, so makes you wonder what the need is to continue to hold back that money, but that's another discussion. But if we found out next week that the state aid was being restored just to the tune of the gap elimination adjustment, so what happens to that gap?
Goes away.
So $300,000 gap, $365,000 theoretically in gap elimination aid money, what happens to the gap? The gap's gone, and we're $65,000 to the plus.
Right.
So it's a totally different conversation we're having from that point till the 21st of April. Okay? Rick?
I'm sorry, you're-
No, that's all right.
When you folks were getting to talk to our elected representatives, did they offer any kind of hope, of real hope there, or don't they know?
They don't have a clue.
They don't know. We discussed gap elimination adjustment with all of them. My guess is it's going to be some combination of partial restoration of the gap elimination adjustment and increases in general operating aid. And, you know, the gap elimination adjustment dollar figure, that's a flat dollar figure. It's $365,000, period. The general operating aid is much easier for our representatives in Albany, not to disparage any of them, but that figure is a lot easier to manipulate than the gap elimination adjustment figure. That's there. It's in our budget runs, I mean, from previous years, we know what it is. So that would be a little harder to monkey around with, unless the decision is, well, you know what, we'll reduce gap elimination adjustment by 50% next year, and we'll give you a little bit more in operating aid. I mean, it's going to, I think it's going to be some combination there, but we'll see. They don't know any more than I know, which is a sad comment, but they don't know. However, if things do not go nearly that well as that scenario or some other scenario, we could be looking at about a $300,000 gap. Okay, so-
Joe, before you go on, just a point of clarification. So when you were talking about projecting out the timeline, if we don't, if Albany has not given us the information and adopted its own budget by, you know, at least a couple of days before April 21st, then we will have to budget based on an assumption of no aid increase. Is that what you're saying?
We have a couple of choices at that point, and Tom, you can, I'm spitballing now, so you jump in and tell everyone I'm talking about it any time you want. But I'd say we have a couple of choices in that scenario. We could, we could throw a hail mary pass and hope that we're getting more aid, and hope on a particular dollar amount, and plug that in, and hope that's how it turns out or better. We could do that. Or we could, another option would be to assume, to play it ultra-conservative, and to assume we're not going to get any more, and to say, well, we need to cut our budget by $300,000. And then if after April 21st, it turns out we're getting all this other aid, we could always restore. Remember, the budget is a dollar amount that the taxpayers are voting on. They're not voting on how many classroom teachers we're going to have in Chancellor next year, or how many computers we're going to buy next year, or any of that stuff. They're not voting on that. They're voting on, you're going to spend this amount of money, or no more than this amount of money. And even if we put something in our budget, while we certainly have never, and I don't see any reason to deceive the public and say, yeah, we're going to spend it on this and then spend it on something else, essentially, we have broad latitude as to what we're going to spend it on. And in fact, things change, don't they? I mean, we budgeted for three high-cost special education kids last year, we wound up with nine. We had to spend money that we had earmarked for something else to pay those bills. So that stuff happens all the time. You know, a budget is a spending plan, and it, like all plans, they change with the real world. So we could then come up with, the ultra-conservative approach would be to say, let's find $300,000 worth of cuts to our budget, and if we get more aid after April 21st, then great, we can restore some or all of that. And if we don't, then at least we know we're going to be able to do what we say we were going to do within the tax levy cap. So I think those are our options, and that's what makes this part of the budget process so frustrating to all of us, is that we still don't know, as we sit here, exactly what we have to work with. And to be honest, we can thank our governor for holding those estimates hostage to his agenda, whether it be on education, or ethics reform, or whatever else is in his hopper. So we don't want to go off on that one, because we'll be here a lot too in the afternoon. So that brings me to the next part of it. And to address the possibility of that happening, that being, we have to find $300,000 worth of cuts to balance a potential gap if we don't get some or all of that in state aid, we've put together with the hard work of all the administrators sitting in this room, and at this point, I'd just like to talk about some of these in a general sense. And we'll have, you'll have time to talk to the building principals about any specific questions that you have before we leave today. So I want to talk about, you've heard the word placeholders used a couple of times this morning. You've heard Tom use the term at least a couple of times, I think, once in terms of special education, once in terms of a BOSI's placement. And there are some, there'll be some references to placeholders in the list of cuts that we put together. And, you know, placeholders are, can be a funny thing, because you could deliberately overestimate what you think you might need, and say, we're putting a placeholder in for this, or that, or the other thing, with no intent that you're ever going to use it. Okay? So I just want to go on record as saying that anything that's in our budget, or that winds up being in our budget before we wrap this process up on April 1st, are placeholders that have a very real likelihood of happening, or that are such that if we don't have a placeholder in the budget, and something comes to pass that we need it, then where are we getting the money from? Something else has to be cut. We're not going to get an extra bag of money dropped in here on, you know, in the middle of the school year and say, oh, hey, here's some extra money to use. At least, we probably won't get that. Well, it's not totally unprecedented, but I could-
Seen it taken away.
Yeah, well, that's a whole other thing. So keep that in mind with placeholders. I think the thing with placeholders is that, for example, if we even had an inkling that we'd have nine high-cost special education pupils this year instead of the three that we budgeted for, we'd have budgeted, we'd have put placeholders in for nine kids. But, you know, our thinking at that time was, you know what? We have one, we'll put in two placeholders, it's not out of the question that we might get a couple more kids. We never thought in our wildest dreams that we'd have nine kids. And I think, you know, otherwise, it would have been irresponsible for us to say, you know what, we got to pad our budget with placeholders, because it's not out of the realm of possibility that that might happen. But we have never, that's not been our practice. We've tried to be, again, to be conservative. Sometimes, most times it works, sometimes it bites you the tail, like with the situation this year. I mean, we're scrambling with all those additional costs. Granted, we're going to get some additional aid this year, but we still have to pay for it out of the current budget. So we're very conservative with placeholders. What else did I want to mention to you before we get into the nitty-gritty here? You'll also remember that at the very beginning of the process, based on what we've done the last few years, the board directed our administrative team to come up with a list of possible additions to our programs and services, that if we had the budget headroom to afford them, that we might be interested in considering. You got those so long ago, you might not even remember them all. I think Tom gave you a list of those again this morning, just for your reference. And then when things started getting really not good with the state budget picture, we pretty much put them on the side and said, you know what, the likelihood that we're going to be referring to that is probably slim to none. If we got all that gap elimination aid adjustment returned to us, like I said, we'd make up that gap and have $65,000 additional, and we could maybe consider some other things. But that's really Pines Guy thinking right now on March 21st, from my perspective. So we've asked the, our administrators to put together possibilities. As I sit here today, I'm hoping that after the dust clears in Albany, that we'll have to, we could take those lists and just shred them up and throw them away. I mean, that's my fervent hope. Our budgets, as you know, have gotten tighter and tighter year by year. We've been fortunate, we haven't. year by year. We've been fortunate, we haven't had to lay off many staff over the last five years. We haven't had to close schools like some of our neighboring school districts have. We've been very fortunate that we've been able to maintain our programs and services and we're hopeful that we can continue to do those things. But my point is that the thinner our budget gets, the, the less there is to put on the, to put on the chopping block, as it were, without us starting to have an impact on programs and services. And that's why we're, that's what we're, that's what, my goal is to avoid having to do that. Lisa?
I don't wanna short-circuit the discussion of the, the potential cut list. I do wanna make an observation and get your response to it. Considering what you just said about what, what could happen if we're faced with, you know, the day we have to adopt the budget and still not know what state aid we're getting, and your prediction, which I think is a sound one, about what the likelihood is of how the process will ultimately play out, why would we not simply adopt or instruct for budgetary purposes, the adoption of all the cuts on the tier one and tier two list up to the $300,000 figure, make that our budget? And then, you know, if we get more, if, if this, this process gets firmed up before D-Day or C-Day, then we, then we can, you know, we'll have to rejigger things anyway. But if it doesn't, we will have a budget that will be at the tax levy limit and we won't have to scramble or worry about whether or not we're going to have to cut things we don't feel like we can cut. We will have, we will have a budget. It will not be the ideal budget. It's not, it won't be the process that we would like to have, but it'll, will at least be a fiscally responsible way of going forward.
Well, my, my response to that question is, I'll, I'll answer the question with another question. I know they tell you not to do that, but I think attorneys do sometimes.
Sometimes.
Yeah. So, what, I would answer your question by, by saying, given that we're sitting here on March 21st, that the state's self-imposed budget deadline is April 1st, that we are meeting again on April 14th and having to adopt the budget the following week on April 21st, why make those cuts now when there's a likelihood that we will know something more between now and next week or April 1st? And, and the reason I say that is because as soon as we adopt the budget with these cuts, we're sending shockwaves through our system. People who perhaps will not, will lose their jobs, and there's not very much of that here, are going to be upset, understandably so, only to have us come back and say, hey, you know what, we got no money. That's, we don't have to do that after all. I mean, better than, than not be able to say that. But I don't know that we have to make that decision now. I think we have at least a couple of weeks and we may not have to make that decision at all if there's a favorable outcome from Albany, yet we still have enough time. Because ultimately, if we get to April 20th, the night before we have to adopt the budget, and I would back it up to April 14th to give us a little bit of breathing room, if there's no sign that there's gonna be a budget from Albany, then I think that's exactly what we're gonna have to do. We're gonna have to make that, make up that gap. And that gap is likely gonna come from these items that we've, that we put out there as possibility. And that, that's gonna be the outcome. I, I don't see how we could, in good conscience, do anything other than that if we have to adopt the budget before Albany's budget deliberations are done and we know what our number's gonna be. I think that's exactly what we will do. I don't think we have to do that, nor do I think it's, from my perspective, prudent to do that now. I think we have at least two or three weeks to do that and to let the process in Albany work out and not to have to tell all of our staff, you're not gonna have this next year, your program's getting cut this year, your job's getting cut this year. I mean, I don't, I don't see what that buys us to do that now.
I, I actually.
That's my, that's my response.
I do, I do have an answer, a non-question answer.
Great.
Okay. The, the answer's really a process que, it's really a process answer. What, which way does the process make more sense? I hear your point about not wanting to get everybody upset and worried about what's going to happen, only to have to say, okay, you know, false alarm, don't worry about it. On the other hand, if you're making decisions a week before, a few days before the deadline date, it is inevitable that those decisions are gonna be made in an atmosphere of pressure and tension and it creates possibly as much, possibly more anxiety for your staff, for the staff of the buildings and for the community in general, just to be operating, you know, in a, in a frenzied situation as opposed to a commerce situation. And my thought, and again, I'm not trying to cut off discussion of this, but my thought was that having a decision made ahead with the caveat to all stakeholders that we may have the ability to make changes because of the way things play out, might actually be less anxiety-provoking generally, just because certainty is better than uncertainty. But I will defer to your, your and your staff's view on this because you're far more experienced in this process than I. I'm just wondering whether we should weigh the, you know, the anxiety before versus anxiety after issue. And then the only, the other thing is, and I don't, I'm not saying that this will happen, but it's always a risk that when you're acting, you're trying to do things in an atmosphere of tension with a short deadline, that errors creep into the process more, or are more likely to creep into the process than they are when you're, you have more time, you can act more deliberately.
Well, I, I would, I, I would suggest that there's, there's a, there's a way to, to cut that baby in half, as it were. We have a list of possible deletions from the budget. And as you pointed out, we can go through that list and have Tom draw a line at $300,000 and then say, okay. Now, remember, these are my prioritizations of lists that the, that the administrators came, came up with. And A, they, they do not always agree and we can, we as administrative team can respectfully agree to disagree because they are doing what I've asked them to do, which is to advocate for their own programs. And it's sometimes difficult, if not impossible, to advocate for your own program and not see somebody else's program or cut there be the result. And they're doing what they've been instructed to do, advocate for your own program. I've attempted to, to see the bigger picture and say, you know what, when I throw all this stuff in a bucket, this is how it looks to me. Now, there's no, there's no science to that either. That's based on my having been here for a couple of years and having been, this isn't my first rodeo either. But, you know, my prioritizations aren't perfect. They're my best guess at how I think the best outcome would be if we were to have to go through that list. So, I mean, there's, there's an element of subjectivity in, in this whole process, let's, let's be honest. But I think we could sooner rather than later say, all right, let's look at the first $300,000 worth of proposed cuts here. Is there anything we don't wanna see happen that we could maybe substitute something lower on the list for? That's, that's kinda getting to the same place without actually saying, you know what, we're gonna adopt the budget with those cuts right now and if things get better by April 21st, we can always backpedal on that. So, it kind of, I think they do what you, what you're suggesting we do without making a final decision. We can still have that, those conversations about what's here. And I'll, I'll give you an example. I'm not picking on anybody. But I'll, I'll take the example of a placeholder elementary school teacher, okay, which is at the top of my list. The only reason it's at the top of my list is because right now our, our enrollments for kindergarten appear to be on the low side. So, if I had, you know, if, if forced to make a decision today, absent all these other pieces of information, I'd say, yeah, that's, that's probably, if I had to make a decision and we had to adopt the budget tonight, I'd say, yeah, we can't, we can't afford that placeholder. Okay? There were some other things on that first page that I think if we didn't have state aid support, yeah, they'd, they'd go. Assuming we, we need to close that $300,000 gap, which is the assumption I'm working on. So, I think we can add that discussion, we can start that today. Maybe we need more information, maybe we need more time to think about, is that the right thing to do or not? And that's kind of what we do here on this day. That's, I mean, I'm looking at the clock and saying, you know, we got another hour or so, hour and a half or thereabouts to have these discussions and ask these administrators, what if, what if, what happens if, with the idea that we may or may not have to use $300,000 worth of these cuts or less, depending on what we hear from Albany in the next week or two or, or three. Ultimately, if we hear nothing by April 21st, then that's what we discussed and decided on. If we don't hear anything, it's gonna be what the budget looks like. And then we backtrack, you know, it's not as good a place to be, but we have to adopt the budget. A dollar amount that's gonna cover what has to be done. So, I don't, I don't know if that helps at all.
So, Diane's hand up first.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've always been in favor of not having stressful situations for our staff or anyone. I mean, if I go back to before I was on the board, we, the board was discussing a list of cuts that was very stressful for the staff. And then we heard the retirements and that took away that whole discussion. And, you know, now we don't, we have the retirements earlier and that's a piece that, that helps. The finance committee actually moved, asked to move this meeting for that same purpose, that, you know, we'd hope we'd had more information before we were sitting here today, but, you know, we're not. And we're kinda now on this teeter-totter where we have to kind of look at cuts and probably look at things to add because we could fall either way. But I think you kinda have to, you know, work through the process, you know, so that you're not sitting there at the last minute, not knowing which way you wanna go. I mean, it's, as frustrating as it might be, I think we just, we do have to go through it. And unfortunately, you know, it might cause some people to be upset, but I think it's the only way to kind of work through it unless we could control Albany, but I don't think so.
So, perhaps, I'm sorry, is some, somebody else?
Rick Maddox.
Yeah. I think it's important to me personally to go through this actually, because as an elected representative of a lot of constituencies out here, I need to understand what it is that this really means. And, you know, I took some time to go through all of these lists and I've marked them up. And I actually plan to resist some of them and I certainly need to know more information about all of them. So, I don't wanna global it at all. I wanna hear, I'm up now, so I'm gonna pick. But every time I think, so we don't have to do it and so we can go out there if we get asked in the stop and shop. What is that about? We actually can sound like we know what we're talking about. I kinda promised Joe early on when we met that I wouldn't micromanage, but I don't think this is micromanaging. I think this is what, what the, the school boards do.
All right. Before we go on to discussing these lists, does anybody feel that we need to have a break? Okay. All right.
All right. So, so I'd, I'd suggest that we start with, with that first sheet, which if, if taken as presented, would represent reductions of $224,600. Yes?
Sorry. We didn't, we didn't get the list of additions, but I, I think.
The wish list?
The wish list.
Yes.
Just because since we have everyone here, it'd be a good time to go through both of the lists.
I'll go. Oh, you didn't have copies of that?
No, I, I, that's the one I forgot.
Okay.
Any copies of that? Then we'll.
Thank you.
So, the item, let's, you know, the items in the first page are a good, a good chunk of that three, that mythical $300,000 gap. So, why don't we start there? And we have our administrators here. If you have questions to ask about any of them, that's what they're here for. And I hate to have them spend a Saturday morning with us eating bagels and not, and not have the opportunity to, to enlighten you on, on any of these. So, so there, there you have $224,000 worth of potential deletions. Ask away.
Brett, probably, and Joe. So, let's start at the top here. This classroom teacher that he just talked about in, in Chancellor, I understand that the registration is at 60 now. I think we just went to a fourth one last year, so you have that room all set up and that's, and equipped and all of that kinda stuff.
So, let, let's stop you right there. The registration isn't at 60.
It's at. It's at Kermish, she's at 39. But there were some gaps in how that information was distributed to the community. It was resulting in issues, things like that. So, that's actually a result, which is a very not the normal way we should be getting that info. Last year, we actually changed some of that, which is why we had such a really accurate number at this time of the year. I have to say that we're not gonna please stop the 39 kids in kindergarten. I, every year I've been here, 65 to 75 are coming to kindergarten every single year, no matter what the projections were. And this past year, we had 81 start kindergarten. We're down to 79, we're actually down to 78, including discharges, things like that. We actually got a rainy kindergarten, the current kindergarten yesterday, but a few days ago. So, our current kindergarten's at 79 kids. We started needing to do projections for the, for the last year. So, just based on the six years I've been here, we've had 65 to 75 kids, so we're pretty much. So, I, I don't think they're reflective. I, I have the opportunity to add concerns about that being the first item we're talking about. This is the first year we have put a, a, a placeholder in the budget for it or something. I worked early on, like early November, early October, to say we can't, we can't keep having these conversations every year and passing a budget and then doing damage controls. So, for example, I have a fifth grade teacher from the working kindergarten this year because even in scrambling at the end of the year and me throwing around items, sort of like wish list items that we funded and things, it just wasn't even something really that happened last year. So, you know, I, I just feel like it's a detriment to the youngest kids in our district. These classes, yes, within age are still getting in the blood twenties. Right now, even with the numbers, I've got like 20, 21, 19, and then 18 if you include your class. So, obviously, I'm advocating for my building. You know, I, in, in doing some back of the napkin, you know, calculations, I mean, I, I have $30,000 worth of cuts in two and three that I'd, I'd much rather have as the first item there. I can still go back to my staff and probably come up with another 15 if I had to, to, I just think this is something important. And that's, you know, not really having conversations with my, my other colleagues about maybe items they'd be interested in doing. But, you know, at this point, I, I don't wanna waste the opportunity around this, in this room to just, I, I'm not happy about that being the top part. I'm not. I think it defeats the purpose of the placeholder if we're gonna cut it before we adopt the budget. The whole reason it's in there is because these numbers historically aren't complete before we adopt the budget, whether we have stated it or not. At this point, I'm, I'm praying for stated. I don't wait for a lot of things, but I'm praying for stated. I just don't wanna be in a position, again, with the youngest, toughest kids to work with in this entire district, having 23 kids in a classroom. I get that we have, we're, we're fortunate to have a full-time age, but I think in six years, and I was excited to see that we had made progress in that conversation, not excited to see that it's the first thing on that list. And I understand we have to do, we have to do. I just, for me, advocating for my building, I think we're gonna wind up with, I mean, it's impossible for me to say just other, other than what we had in the past. We had 65 to 75 kids. Those numbers are there. And 30 or 39 right now, I don't think is reflective of what we're gonna have. And there's reasons for it, again, there's, you know, nobody's specific fault, but there were some communication issues, the information did not get out to certain places that it usually. certain places that it usually does. It got out to others, we found that out recently, because I was concerned about these numbers, because this doesn't reflect what we usually have. So we remedied that, but it was a remedy that just happens as we, so I might see, I can see 30 kids show up in the next month, and then we're off to the races. So that's just basically where I sit. I see other places where, again, I just have to take this opportunity to say, there's not equity. I like, I like this group to look at the equity of Tier One, Two, and Three. There are some groups that, like the entire Tier Two are cutting $350. I don't think that's fair when the free building specifically are cutting tens of thousands of dollars. And I think there's places we can cut as a district that would help us get that, keep that $98,000 in there. You know, again, that's above my pay grade, so what happens if we don't need it? But I have to advocate for my building, and I've been doing it for years, and this year I really started super early trying to do, working with my staff. I can go back to my staff, I think, I don't think there's a person in my building that would say, hey, maybe we can find some other monies to do that. Right now, I'd like to go on record and advocate that if it's possible, you know, I'd be willing to take my entire Tier Two, Tier Three cut, two Tier Two and Three cuts, and move them into a Tier One for a little bit of that route. I know that's not going to get us the $98,000, mostly for what that would cost. Right now, without even going back and looking at my budget, that would give us a third of that money without doing anything other than moving whatever I've already decided to be cut. I appreciate that people would say it, but I'd certainly advocate for it and figure out another way to do it. I understand we have a lot of other big districts.
I was in the middle of my telegraphy at this point. I just have a philosophical, you know, remember where I come from here, folks? I used to be a high school teacher, but I always used to say that, you know, if they didn't do their job, I couldn't do mine, and that's absolutely true, and, you know, I'm trying to protect the program here. I'm not going to vote to do away with a kindergarten teacher when there's the possibility that we may need it, and that we've got, we've set up for, we have those are the people that need the support the most, and I respect everything that everybody's done here, and I'm not trying to micromanage it all, but I'm not going to support that.
I saw Diane's hand up.
Thank you, Brett, and that's exactly what we should do, is advocate for your building. Can you, I thought this placeholder, and this could be my mistake, was more for a fifth grade teacher than the kindergarten teacher, and I don't know if you could go through the grades and how many sections there would be of each without this placeholder, but, you know, maybe we'll have to get that to us later, but if you could, talk about what that would mean for the.
Yes, if it's primarily for a kindergarten teacher, we need four sections. If right now we have three, I'll move that fourth teacher out, and we'll have four sections, and then we'll have a grade, one, first, and the fifth.
Right now, there's third, three sections, and fifth?
Right now, there is.
Right now? And then four, all the way down?
So like, nothing being added, we still have that same layout, but the four sections would be fifth, third, and next year, rather than kindergarten?
Laura?
That's sort of my question also, because based on the enrollment figures, you have a pretty small, what is now a second grade class? So could the staff be shifted to follow three sections with that grade? Then you'd get your four kindergarten teachers, you'd get your four fifth grade teachers, but you'd have only three sections for the next year, third grade? Would that work?
Yeah. And I actually looked at that current grade last year, that was the lowest enrollment in my building last year. Fifth grade was actually the second lowest. But here, the age of kids, I'm advocating for this one, I side with that route. Yeah, right now, the numbers I have for that, unfortunately, we're dealing with two grades with people in my building now, the two highest new grades in the current second and current third, current care being the highest. It looks like next year, fourth grade, and I'm hurting my mind, fourth grade next year, we're going to have two inclusion classes, and literally two support classes, there's so many. It's not as high in the current section, only third next year, but we have a lot of needs in second grade, too, and that's also one of the things that happens, is we're going through the RTI process, we're supposed to, meaning going through child study teams, we're going through 504 and CSC and all those, you know, working with teachers to see if interventions are, students are responding to certain interventions, and then moving forward and discussing those students, then you're going to see less kids ultimately being sent to, let's say, 504 or CSC for evaluations in the lower grades, because we're starting to move into this idea of the RTI process. So ultimately, where you find some of those kids finally getting through to, all right, you're always going to try this and this, the child's going to child study, let's say, two years in a row, they're currently in second grade now, that's when we start actually identifying those real student disabilities, students that wind up qualifying for child, for special ed, qualifying for 504s, which also need a disability to qualify for. Those numbers are always shifting, because that's where those, I mean, obviously, not the kids that need the needs in kindergarten, we have those needs in kindergarten first, but that's where we actually really start identifying first. Second, second grade school year and third grade probably is the most, so it is a smaller group, but three classes across, I don't remember right here. Next year, second grade of 68 students, I'm sorry, third grade of 69 students, cutting that into three sections would create classes of 25, 26 in class, so it just doesn't seem like a manageable number, it's a support that we have to create in those classes, social launch classes. You know, if you think about it this way, we're working in around balance of receiving workshop models, small group environment. Every time you add four or five students, you increase that workload by 20% for the teacher, and so every time, you know, five or six kids may not sound like a big deal to add to the class of 20, but that actually creates a much tougher environment for the teacher. The teacher, we're lucky enough to be in the district, right, and we've advocated to try to keep those smaller classrooms. So certainly, that's where I'm going to gather, lab, if there's a community that they're interested in doing that. Backs up, we used to, if you were on the board, it was a huge outcry, and I think we made the point that we want to support that, primarily K1 and TPI. When you get into third, that's the gray area, four, five, you start to see large class sizes are doable, but based on the needs, that would just be very difficult. And third grade was, I suppose, a few sections.